Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tracy, could you have the scouts go to the microphone and introduce themselves?
Certainly.
My name is Emily Sweeney. I'm in AOL. I go to Lace Elementary.
I'm Rain Tucker. I'm in AOL. I go to Lace School and my pack is 36.
Hi, my name is Owen Sweeney. My rank is Weeblo's and I go to Lace School Elementary and I'm nine years old.
My name is Will. My name is Will. I'm a Weeblo and I go to Lace Elementary.
Hello, my name is Andrew Griesman and I'm a Weeblo as one. I'm from Pack 36 and I go to Lace Elementary School.
My name is Chase Tucker. I'm a Weeblo and I'm from Pack 36 and I go to Lace Elementary School.
My name is Vance Pearson. I'm a Weeblo from Pack 36 and I go to Kingswood Academy.
Hi, my name is Jack Bradley and I'm a Weeblo from Pack 36 and I go to Lace School.
My name is Jack Hoden. I'm a Weeblo one from Pack 36 and I go to Lace Elementary School.
I had an opportunity to attend the Pinewood Derby a couple of weekends ago and I had a chance to, for the last four or five years, judge the cars. And a lot of these kids were participants in that. And I'll tell you, we had a great day that day. We really did. Watching these young men and young women and the cars that they built and the race that they did. And in fact, a couple of weeks, we're going to have the first, second, and third place winners come back and we're going to bring some attention to them. But I want to congratulate Tracy and Leslie for the fine jo- and the parents for the fine job they do with these young people. So, thank you. And with that, we'll have our roll call.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum that takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any issue. It does not have to be on our agenda. If not, it takes us to approval of the minutes. We don't have minutes for tonight's meeting. So, we have receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Gustafson.
Yeah, bear with me. I've got five of them here tonight. The first is, I got a call from a resident on Gilbert Court regarding a four-wheeler being driven near, being driven up and down the street, which Chuck with the chief and that is illegal. So, but I urge residents, you know, if you do see this happening and stuff, call the police right away. Just call 911. You do not need to give your name. And whoever is riding quite, and they're driving pretty high speed backing down the street, you've got to be, it's illegal. So, just please stop it. The second is, I attended a meeting last week at Center Cast District 66 regarding a potential future referendum to increase property taxes to cover revenue shortfall and facility enhancements. Unfortunately, there was only seven people in the audience, but all quite vocal. But people really need to get involved in this. The dollar amount of the referendum has not been yet determined, but it, based upon what I heard that evening, it could be quite substantial. So, there are going to be having more of these meetings. So, please get involved. The next item is that I did have a meeting with a resident on Cambridge Drive in the Farmingdale Ridge subdivision regarding a meeting for a special use for the Firestone Building on the north side of 75th Street. So, it's actually in Downers. But the resident is within 250 feet from the establishment and it's a special use. So, they want to convert the building into a personal vehicle repair and maintenance business. So, unfortunately, the initial meeting is tonight, but I spoke with the individual, the Downers Grove office, who actually lives in my subdivision, to voice my concerns and questions and stuff regarding the development. He indicated there will be additional meetings in March to be able to address those to a further degree. But he gave me some comfort on what he had told me. There is a meeting Thursday night at the Woodridge City Hall at 7:00 PM regarding the warehouse development on Lamont Road across from the Woodmere subdivision. You know, back in, in September 2020, they, they voted down, and this is Woodridge, voted down four to two, the development. Now, this one warehouse is 217,000 square feet, 280 parking spots, and 20 dock doors. So, I know a lot of times, last time, there was a lot of resentment against this. So, people, and they already are getting very heavily involved in this one. And I think, Mayor, you saw and responded to that, too. The one other, last item I have is that I did receive an email from a resident of Woodmere regarding the lack of progress in getting repairs done from the tornado in June. She still has a broken window and broken downspouts. And I mentioned this to Dan. Dan already reached out today and got some responses back from the individual responsible for the repairs when I sent those responses back to the resident.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone else? Mary?
Just, I think this is a good opportunity to remind citizens about the celebrating our Citizen of the Year, Lou Mallers. He was announced as a Citizen of the Year at the last meeting. The congratulatory reception will be held on Tuesday, February 22nd. That's our next city council meeting in the police training room across the parking lot. It's open to everybody. No need to make a reservation. There will be desserts and coffee provided and you can, you know, meet Lou in person and also other members of the Darien community. There will be a celebratory dinner dance to be held in Lou's honor on Friday, March 4th, at Alpine Banquets in Darien. It will be a family-style dinner, open bar, music, dancing, and Alpine's world-famous kolachki for dessert. Cocktails start at 6:00 PM, dinner at 7:00. It is $49 per person and you make your reservation with the City of Darien at the front desk. That has already opened up. The cutoff date for that is February 23rd. So, you can come into City Hall or call Diane Novarini at the City Hall number 630-353-8102. So, I encourage people to come out and celebrate our Citizen of the Year, Lou Mallers.
Anyone else? If not, that moves us to our mayor's report. The first item under our mayor's report is, we had a vacancy on our Planning and Zoning Committee. Mr. Steve Hyatt relocated to Arizona, which created a vacancy. And we had a gentleman by the name of Christopher Jackson, a local Darien resident architect, who applied for the position. We interviewed Chris and tonight, I'm asking for your advice and consent on his appointment to the Planning and Zoning Committee. I need a motion. Shower, seconded by Belzak. Any discussion? The roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Christopher, you want to come forward? I believe you're here.
I am.
You have to be sworn in tonight.
Sure.
Come all the way up here, Chris.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Christopher Jackson.
Do Solomon swear?
Do Solomon swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I have a card here for you to sign.
You are official, Christopher. Congratulations and thank you.
And thank you.
The second item underneath our mayor's report tonight is regarding Hinsdale South. I said, several months ago, I was invited to attend a presentation by Kelly Van Howes sophomore civics class regarding the development of a farmer's market in Darien. I was impressed by their desire to become involved in the life of the city. As a former teacher, I always loved the fact that high school students or any students want to become involved civically. And I invited them to make a presentation to the Darien City Council, which you'll see this evening. In addition, members of our citizen action committee are also interested in this project as participants and supporters. And with that introduction, I would like to introduce Camden Kiefer, Gustavo Batero, and Haley Bishop, who will make this presentation tonight. Do you like to come forward, please? And if you want to take your mask off so we could hear you, you can do it. You might want to raise that, Gustav, you might want to raise that microphone a bit.
Are you good? Good evening. Wait, sorry. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Marques for giving us this opportunity. My name's Gustavo Batero. I'm a senior at Hinsdale South.
I'm Haley Bishop. I'm a sophomore at Hinsdale South.
And I'm Camden Kiefer. I'm also a sophomore at Hinsdale South.
Last August, our civics class was assigned a service learning project and our class voted and decided that the best approach to this would be bringing a farmer's market to Darien in order to improve our community sense.
So, our purpose here was trying to contribute to bringing about a seasonal farmer's market in Darien was to build a better sense of community, bring fresher and cheaper produce locally. It would be safer food, being that it's grown organically. It minimizes the use of chemicals. We have no true downtown, so this would give people a place to interact and then this would also help bring revenue to the town and local businesses in Darien.
The benefits of a farmer's market. There are many benefits to the farmer's market. As a community benefits, it improves the sense of community in Darien. It creates a local, sorry, a social gathering place every week as people throughout the weeks of June through October will be able to meet every week. And it's local and easy to access. There are many personal benefits with fresh nutritious food. And there's also health benefits with fitness classes or yoga classes. For example, in Hinsdale, they actually have yoga classes on all their farmer's market meetings. And there's also economic benefits with people coming to Darien, especially from towns like Burridge or Downers Grove. You can have a lot more revenue. And then, as discussed, local revenue will be brought to businesses. People can go out to eat right after going to the farmer's market.
Okay, so some potential locations we could have this, one being Darien Plaza. We had Darien Fest there this past summer, I believe it was, and it did seem to be pretty successful. It's also located along Cass Avenue, one of the busier streets in Darien, which means a lot of people can go and see it. Adding on to that, we could also use Lace Elementary Schools. If you can see, there are two parking lots circled there. We could use one for cars and one for the actual event. It's also located on 75th and Cass Avenue, again, two of the busier streets in Darien, so a lot of people can see it. And we also would be able to have this there basically any day of the week, most likely since farmer's markets happen during the summer. It's, it's a lot to happen during that time. Adding on to that, we could actually have it on the grounds of Hinsdale South if we wanted to. We would recommend doing it in the Hinsdale South student parking lot, but due to, due to construction happening there over the summer, our administration has recommended that we would start in the transition center. It's a little bit of a small location, but it would still be a good place to start out.
So, we talked to some surrounding towns, Hinsdale being one of them, and we asked just a couple of facts about their farmer's market. They told us that it took place from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Mondays from June throughout October. They're located in Burlington Park. They sell items like fruit, veggies, fish, bread, coffee, nuts, soaps, flowers, and cheeses. They offer a complimentary fitness class from 7:00 to 8:00 AM. And then, their farmer's market has been going on for 45 years, showing that it's important to their citizens.
We also spoke to Naperville Farmer's Market. It's open from the same time, June through October. And one of the benefits for this one is that it's actually open on Saturdays, which is ideal for families. And especially, once the school year starts, people can still keep going with their family. And if people work during the week, they can come visit. And it's also, it's been open for 30 years, which shows just how important it's been to the community.
So, the last one we talked to was La Grange's Farmer, the La Grange Farmer's Market. Just some general information, it's loc- it's open from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Thursdays from May through October. There's no admission fee. There's free parking and it's right in front of their village hall. Something that makes this one special is it does include activities like bingo and story time for children. So, this makes it like not just an activity for older people or parents. There are also like now the parents can bring their kids and not have to worry about them being bored or complaining. People, people will also stop for breakfast or lunch after, which means that it's driving foot traffic to their local businesses and creating revenue for them and the town. And then, the person we spoke to said that it has been a vibrant part of their community for over 25 years.
So, we talked to Nancy Cummings from the La Grange Business Association and she gave us some testimonial benefits. She said that it's an essential part of our business community. It drives foot traffic to our central business district, which impacts our restaurant and retail revenue. Customers come to shop the market, then they browse our stores, stop for breakfast or lunch, or visit a location that they've not yet been to before. And then, it's a community gathering spot for all ages.
We also spoke to Kathy Mortensen from Naperville. And she said, the locals count on the farmer's market for local shopping every Saturday, which is something that we should look to, look at, to show like we could have this in Darien. Our farmer's market is 33 years old, being one of the first farmer's markets, and several thousand people attend each week. This statistic especially is very important because it shows that people from surrounding towns also come to visit. And with people from other towns, it will increase everything in our area.
So, just on a map, here's the locations of some other farmer's markets. You'll see that Naperville's is located in a parking lot, a lot like Hinsdale South's, a lot like Hinsdale South's student parking lot. La Grange's is located on a busier street. It's located on a busier street in front of their village hall. And then, Hinsdale's Farmer's Market is located in Burlington Park, which is also in a very busy part of their community.
And then, here's just another angle of those pictures, of those locations. As you can see, La Grange is on a busy street. Hinsdale's in the park. And then, Naperville is actually what we would be trying to do. I don't know if you can see my, the mouse. But like over here, this is something that we are trying to do with either like the Hinsdale South parking lot or the transition center. Because this is the space we have. We don't only have a park we could use, or we don't have something like La Grange, since we don't only have a busy street like that.
So, we created a survey and in doing this, we created this little QR code. And on Halloween, while trick-or-treating or handing out candy to our doors, we handed this out to trick-or-treaters. So, the results from the survey said that over 100 people, 120 people took the survey. Around 85% of the survey participants reside in Darien. Age ranges from 14 to 60-plus years old took the survey. Close to 90% of people find a farmer's market beneficial. 90% of people would be interested in attending a farmer's market in Darien. And over 62% of people are particular about where they get their produce from.
So, just another view of the question, which city do you reside in? You can see that just about 60% of survey participants reside in Darien. But it's important to note that a good amount of them also reside in Willowbrook and Burridge because these people could also be attending our farmer's markets. So, they're, they come like just.
Survey data here shows almost 90% of people would find a farmer's market in Darien beneficial. 60, almost 62% of people are particular about where they get their fresh produce from. And then, the statistics, I think, is the most important. It's 92% of people would attend a farmer's market in Darien. Just to show, we do have people who are actually really interested about this. And this is only from like around 120 people. And I'm sure with all the people in Darien, that we, these numbers could increase.
So, again, we just want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you guys tonight. We really do believe that this could bring such a great community sense to Darien and be such a staple in our town. And we were just wondering if you guys had any questions or could give us some suggestions about our next steps to get this to happening.
I just want to say, great job. This is very eye-opening for me. I know you guys put a lot of effort and shows what kind of amazing students we have here at Hinsdale South as well. So, thank you for coming. One quick question. I noticed, for example, in Naperville, you have, you have a marketing director. Is that, are these people on city staff that run, do you know, run these farmer's market? Or do they, who runs it? Because ultimately, we do have to have someone, if we afford, to organize it. Are these generally volunteers? Or I know Naperville, it sounds like they have a full-time staff member that does that.
Yeah, so it really depends on the town. Like, La Grange's, they have the La Grange Business Association that runs that. So, for us, that would.
Can you talk in the mic? Because people at home want to hear you, too. Thanks.
So, as I was saying, that would, that really depends on the town. We have, like, La Grange has the La Grange Business Association that runs that. And then, I know, I think it's the Downers Grove Farmer, Farmer's Market does the YMCA, whereas Hinsdale's is more just right through the town. So, it really does depend on the town and who's willing to support it.
Oh, thank you.
You know, since I saw your presentation, we've developed what's called a citizens' action committee. We had about 25 different organizations meet on, what was it, January 8th, to talk about how they could all work together for a project for the city of Darien. And funny enough, the idea of a farmer's market came up that day. And I told them, you guys were going to be coming and making this presentation tonight. And I think we have some people from that citizens' action group that are here tonight. And that's a group that would like to work with you to get this going in Darien. Personally, I'd love to see this either at Lace School or in the Jewel Parking Lot because I'd like to see it where it would draw attention to our downtown area, so to speak. So, that group is willing to work with you. If you would like to show up on Saturday, February 12th, at the Indian Prairie Library, we're having our second meeting of that committee. There'll be a lot of people there that day. You can make this presentation or you could hand something out and talk about it. And that could generate some interest in terms of how we can take the next steps towards this idea of a farmer's market. I think it's a fabulous idea. I was so impressed that day that I heard Camden Haley and Gustavo making their presentation that I thought, I just, I want the city council to hear this. I want them to see what this is all about. Because I think this is something we can do in Darien. And I think, I love the idea of giving people a place to go on Saturday mornings. The idea of community, bringing parents, bringing their children together for an event like this, I think, would be wonderful. Mary?
I just want to thank you for coming and I applaud Hinsdale South and the civics classes. I think it's just an amazing thing. I have a senior, I think, as you guys are aware, and it's been a great learning experience. And you guys really came out of your program and even though your semester ended, you guys are now in a second semester. You've continued to dedicate your time to this idea and this concept, which, as Joe mentioned, I was part of the citizens' action committee. And that discussion came up, not even aware of what you all had already been working on. And when Joe raised it to their attention, they were thrilled because they're like, it sounds like a lot of research and work has been put into place. So, I, I think it would be wonderful if we can really make this a reality even this year. So, thank you all so much. You did an excellent job.
Just so you know, I invited this, the three of them to participate. Rotary runs a program called Ryla, Rotary's Young Leadership Advisory Group. And I think Haley and Gustavo both signed up for that. We paid their tuition for that. Camden, we could still get you in there because it's not till March. But they'll be, I think you do some of it online and some of it you'll do in person and you'll do it at, I think it's at.
It's at Lyons Township.
Lyons Township High School and I think it's March, later in March. So, they're already taking a step in that leadership direction. But I think we need to applaud them for all their work on this and for the fact that if this comes into being, it'll be because of this class and these three students. So, a round of applause for them.
I just thought, I just thought the three of you could just run it.
Ms. Lencioni, do you want to say anything? Or Kelly, do you want to say anything?
No, I mean, they've just done a wonderful job. This was an entire class project that they started in August and have really seen it through to this point.
Well, I want to thank you, but if you, if you can make it February 12th at the Indian Prairie Library at.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock in the morning. And we can, this could, you could be part of that group discussion because we're going to bring this farmer's market up, idea up again. And we're going to talk about getting their support. The Lions Club are part of that. The Women's Club are part of that. So, we're also looking for financial assistance, maybe from some of those groups as well. So, if you can put that on your calendar, we appreciate it. Mary?
Maybe Mrs. Van How, maybe, or students, if you could email the presentation, because it's so well-done. I was taking some screenshots to share, but I think that would even be helpful, too. And the mayor could share it with the group ahead of time.
Mary, Kelly sent that to me today and I saved it. I have it and Brian has it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Bravo.
All right. It takes us to another section of the mayor's report. There's our, this item that's not on the agenda. It's a proclamation for Black History Month. I'd like to read the following. Whereas February is Black History Month, a time to honor the essential contributions of Black people in the story of America, national, local events, and online celebrations will take place throughout the month to focus attention on Black people's achievement in history. And whereas born as a sharecropper in 1875, Carter G. Woodson went on to become a teacher and the second African-American to earn a doctorate from Harvard. He founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in 1915. It was eventually known as the Father of Black History. And whereas since 1976, February has been designated Black History Month as a time in which especially memorable events are recognized and celebrated, honoring and affirming the importance of African-American history as an essential element to the foundation of American history. Whereas the 2022 Black History Month's theme is Black Health and Wellness. The focus will celebrate the contributions and breakthroughs of Black professionals as well as speaking to the cultural richness of these non-traditional health and wellness practitioners. And whereas celebrating Black history is just not an acknowledgement of the past, but a commitment to the future. Black history is American history. Understanding past barriers to progress for marginalized individuals, specifically people of color, helps us better recognize systems that still produce discriminatory practices and disparate outcomes. And whereas for generations, Black Americans have courageously led the pursuit of justice and equality, struggling to overcome the past, yet still moving forward, taking on the challenges to advance reforms and break down barriers as we strive as a nation to live by the founding principle that all people are created equal. And whereas it is important to take time, the time to learn.
And whereas it is important to take ti- the time to learn from the many lessons found in history's failures, successes, disappointments and triumphs as we strive as a community to pursue an inclusive vision and maximize our potential to positively shape our world. And whereas the city of Darien is proud to honor the history, contributions and achievement of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marques, Mayor of the City of Darien, Illinois, in recognition of African, African, African-Americans past and present in our community, do hereby proclaim February twenty-twenty-two as National Black History Month and encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue with the efforts to increase a world that is more just, peaceful and prosperous for all. Uh, my last announcement of the Mayor's Report is something that we just added. Um, I don't know if any of you knew Elmer Kelney. Elmer Kelney passed away peacefully at home on February fifth with his wife and his children at his side. Elmer was ninety-four years old. He and his wife Diane would have celebrated their seventy-second bir- uh wedding anniversary this year. Uh, they have two children, Karen Lambert and Kenneth. Uh, and five grandchildren and two great grandchildren. I won't get into who he was survived by. After serving in the Army at the end of World War Two, he worked as a traffic router for Hot Point for over twenty years. He turned down a transfer to remain in the Chicagoland area. Elmer's civic life started soon after moving to Marion Hills, pre-Darien, becoming Marion Hills Civic Organization President. And he was instrumental in the formation of both the Marion Hills Little League and the Marion Brook Sanitary District from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-nine. And he also worked to bring about, uh attempt to bring improvements to the community. He served as School Board Secretary of District Sixty-One and he campaigned for incorporation of the city of Darien. Elmer was elected as the first city clerk of Darien and has been honored as our nineteen seventy-nine Citizen of the Year. Elmer and Diana were founding parishioners of Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church, which at that time was Saint Mary's, dating back to the Marion Father Seminary. Visitation is this Thursday from three to eight P M. at Modell Funeral Home at seventy-seven ten South Cass Avenue. Elmer and his wife were good friends of Kathy and I, uh as he was to a lot of people. Uh, he was a sweet man, a very gentleman. Those of you who were at the fiftieth anniversary party several years ago, uh Elmer was there with his family, you would have had a ti- a, a chance to meet him. And uh we're going to put this in our direct connect, because I think it's important that we recognize our founding fathers uh and mothers. And if you go out into the lobby tonight and you look at the top row of pictures, you go about three-quarters of the way down on the top row and you'll see Elmer's picture there. And he, he's definitely someone who laid the foundation for what we have today as a city. And he, he worked his tail end up, believe me. Cause I, I, I knew him when he was much younger and he was still very active. And he would have been very proud, in fact, he was very proud of the city of Darien. And uh if you got a chance, you may want to go over and you want to, maybe want to pay your respects to his wife and his family this Thursday between three and eight at Modell Funeral Home. And that ends uh my Mayor's Report, and that takes us to our City Clerk's Report.
I have two announcements this evening. Uh, Darien City Offices will be closed on Monday, February the twenty-first in observance of President's Day. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-second.
Thank you. Um, City Administrator's Report, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of quick items. First, I wanted to thank the city hall staff, um LRS and all the residents that have signed up for the new garbage program. Just at city hall alone, we registered over twelve-hundred senior citizens. And the process was, was smooth and quick, which, what we wanted, what we planned early on. Um, again, the, that's a lot of people to turn through, through a program here at city hall. Uh, again, they did a great job, uh our staff and LRS, they have also fielded a lot of calls. So again, that's a big shout out to the, uh, to everybody involved. Uh, the second item, I'm not sure, all in clistic, oh, I'm sorry.
What, the twelve-hundred, was that residents or individual people? So that, that would count?
Twelve hundred homes.
Twelve hundred homes, okay, that's what I just wanted to be sure.
Uh, second item, I'm not sure, uh, all in clistic, if you were going to raise that tonight, uh you had, you sent me an email that you were going to bring it up tonight about the.
Yeah, I can, I can discuss it on, on the side, I did some research, so I have some additional questions, so, you know, like, I can just talk to you privately about it, I think would be fine, if that's fine. So I mean, so, so quickly, I put the, put out, I want to do a, a meet and greet, and that wasn't allowed into Darien Connect. And um I understand that um you're unable to put uh campaign stuff in there and, and it looks like it was campaign stuff. So I agree with that, but I do see, for example, a lot of times we'll have a meet and greet with Senator John Curran, and he does have it on a website. So I guess I just want some clarification on, uh, one of the reasons, Brian, you mentioned I can't have it is because it's on a website, but Senator Curran does have a website with events that he has, so to clarify, you're saying it has to not be a, a campaign website? It has to be clearly a um, a congressman's website or a congresswoman's website to have the event uh put in Darien Connect?
Well, there's a number of um events that elected officials have now, they're in office and represent this district. And even in the case of, of John Curran, uh who held a recent event with Mayor Marques, that's on his State of Illinois website. Not a, not a political campaign website where it's obvious that person's running uh for office. And further, she's not in this district. Her, her, uh, the, the rewrite of the districts, I think she would be covering this, but at this point, she was, she's not even in the district. So you, you had also raised something about County Board Chairman Cronin.
Correct, so there was an event, uh another thing that you mentioned was that uh it can be a paid event. Uh, the Chamber sent something out in Darien Connect that he had a paid event in um, uh, in Oakbrook to attend. So one of, one of the things you mentioned, it can't, being a political campaign, a lot of times you, you know, you don't donate money or whatever, uh you do. And I mentioned that uh the Chamber sent something out that Cronin has a State of the County event that you have to pay for. So one of the things you mentioned that you, you can't have, as a campaign event, paying for it, but it looks like this was also an event he's having, State of the County that you pay twenty bucks to attend.
Tom, Tom, I've, I've attended that several times, that's a State of the County. And the twenty dollars is for your lunch, it's not, doesn't go towards his campaign, any campaign.
But that was, that was an email the Chamber sent out to the elected officials.
Okay.
It was not in direct connect, it was just an email. Yeah, I, I mean, even on that event, as the mayor mentioned, that's, that's a, uh, you know, the standing county chairman who was updating on, on city issues as Mayor Marques might at the state of the city. And it was uh no political event and not sent out by us, in contrast to um, you know, the uh event that you had sent it on. Completely apples to oranges.
Okay, gotcha, I understand. And then we'll, really quickly, on L S, L S, LRS, the Lake View Recycling Center, they've done a gr- great job. On social media, if they can make sure our social media vendor, if they put the link to sign up. I know we've been advertising for, city staff has been advertising to sign up. And one of the things on uh, you know, they described the uh, the, the link, it's a, you know, you'll sign up here. Unfortunately, you can't quickly click on it, so if they can just put the link out under advertising, so it's easier to click on, then make it easier as well, so just uh.
You mean in our direct connect?
Correct, not there, not, not Darien Connect, but on social media, on Facebook, correct. So the LSR, we had uh sign up for the new garbage system, so that's great. But there's nowhere to click on it, right? So you'd have to manually type it into a web browser. So if they can make it a clickable link, so someone could just click on it, boom, sign up, it's very easy to do, so.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, on our Facebook, cause we put the direct um uh connection to the special webpage for Darien they set up. So I wasn't aware that you.
Yeah, it's just a matter of detail, but it just makes it easier for.
Oh, sure, yeah, that was the intention and that, that we had that on direct connect, but I will double check that.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Anything else? Do we have any questions for either Chief Thomas or Mr. Gombeck?
I've got questions.
Eric?
Um, Dan, now at the um, these budget meetings that are coming up, are you going to be prepared to answer questions regarding the new municipal services building?
I'll be definitely prepared in any shape or form, you know, provided that it is uh um broached and, and spoken of, yes.
I mean, I'm going to be asking questions, I mean, so you've got some of the numbers run, things that be able to answer some specific questions?
Yes, I'm very well-prepared in their, in their facet of it.
Cause I saw that Woodridge now is building a new police station and municipal services building over on James Avenue, just north of Seventy-Fifth Street, so, you know, this is, we're continuing to see this going on in quite a few uh neighboring towns of, of Darien. You know, the thing is too, it's sad to say with the state of Illinois done, but, you know, a marijuana retailer in Darien could easily pay for a new municipal services building. You know, I attended the Woodridge Board Workshop Zoom Meeting on January twentieth. The workshop was to provide village staff direction if the trustees now want to allow cannabis business in Woodridge. You know, they turned it down in two thousand and nineteen. Well, the vo- informal vote came out and it was five to one in favor. And a quiet, and the ones that voted against it last time indicated they're still, you know, don't like the concept, but the amount of revenue was so substantial that they couldn't vote it down. So we're continuing to see more and more communities now going after that revenue. So I know you've, you're prepared to hopefully, the state of Illinois is supposedly supposed to start issuing licenses in the near future, so I just want to make sure we're prepared. And hopefully, we're going to get a phone call from one of the individuals that was, that was interested before about coming into Darien. Now, are you the contact person then?
Correct, myself or Jordan, you know, we, we'll team up together, uh wherever the phone call comes in and make the opportunities and negotiations uh potentially possible.
Okay, and I just want to thank you for you and your team for the great job of, of the snow plowing that was done.
Thank you, thank you.
I do have a question though.
Sure.
Okay, how long did it take you to go out and clear the, all the snow off the, the snow removal equipment that you got sitting outside?
Well, let's see, it's kind of a little bit of a complicated uh question or ans- question to answer. And particularly, you know, when we know of snow events, uh the bigger trucks, for example, you know, those are, those are the crop of the cream, if you want to say, those are the machines that get the jobs done. So in those particular cases, we literally move everything out of our uh current Public Works Building and jam them in there, you know, the irony of that, you say in there, we have some pictures, and I just pulled them up ironically, um, that show how tight it is in there with people trying to walk past the plow. So, and not to take up time, but I could put it on PowerPoint or that's for another time, unless the council wants to see them. So uh getting back to your specific question, uh we try to put all the important vehicles in the shop so that when it snows, that we're not out there for a half hour to forty-five minutes trying to get them going, and when I say get them going, it depends how cold it was prior to. If it's thirty below, you know, I shouldn't say thirty below, if it's below twenty and it's obviously frigid out there, vehicles take a little longer to start up and the oil, the hydraulics all have to warm up, even though they're plugged in. And I think Alderman Kenny, you could attest to that, uh as far as the equipment goes and running it in the cold from your previous experiences. Um, in, in, in respect to uh the safety of it, you know, it always starts out with a little ice on there, and obviously the trucks gather ice on them. And the larger trucks, again, we try to keep those inside, but when you have to start climbing larger trucks, it's always a safety concern. You know, everything is covered with ice, we all know what it's like to have that ice come in and on, on your vehicle or on your driveway, what the hazards present. So again, it's no different in that respect.
So you do have some equipment that's left outside though?
There is, yes, yes.
Some of the smaller equipment.
Right, it'll, it'll take anywhere from thirty, forty-five minutes to prepare it.
So during that time, you're cleaning it up. My, my, you know, the, the streets go unplowed for that timeframe. And there could be a very serious accident out there, just because you've got to take the time to clear off the snow, cause you can't keep the vehicles inside.
That could be a potential, yes, I mean, it's just the facts of it.
Dan, what time did you guys start plowing?
Um, I couldn't tell you the specific time, I know that uh with the snowstorm that was predicted, it was uh decided that we would have two snowstorm, uh excuse me, uh two teams, uh two, those two teams would be in twelve-hour shifts, and one of them was starting around uh one o'clock, I believe it was, so one will uh, one to one basically, um, and then we continued that until the snow cleared, so every snow event is a little bit different.
The, the snow event that we had last week though, the heavier snow really didn't start falling till like three A M. or four A M. and you guys were out at one, one o'clock.
Right, and, and irony of that is, you know, the snow itself was not of that mass, whereas the one prior to was wet more, so it wasn't as um heavy, if you want to say, regardless, you know, we made passes up and down streets. Unfortunately, residents would shovel the dri- you know, their driveways and, you know, here we come again, uh so on and so forth. And you know, it's, it's not to be malicious, malicious by no means. And it's no different than a resident has to go out there every three, four hours, depends on meticulous they are, to shovel their own driveways. As soon as they're done, it depends how fast it falls, that resident is back out there, again, no different us. Obviously, we're, you know, we're out there for a primary reason, for safety for the motorists, for emergency vehicles, um, you know, until we get into cleanup operations, but.
And how does I dot, you know, store their vehicles? Cause obviously, they've got a heck of a lot more vehicles than, than we have.
A lot, well, they're interesting from a different facet. Number one is, they already are on the road, they work, I believe it's twelve-hour shifts, starting um, I want to say it's November through April. So they literally are on those shifts. So those trucks, obviously, like a lot of you have seen them along the highway, there'll be no snow and they'll be sitting there.
Yeah.
That's their shift, if there doesn't snow, nope, they had a nice nap. Uh, you know, unfortunately, that's the way they operate. And if you want to see, I don't think the city of Darien would want to operate that way.
Yes, so then where do you store those, where do you store those trucks in, you know, June, July, August, May?
They're, they have, so they have garages, to what extent, I'm not sure. But to that specific point, obviously those trucks are running for twelve hours that they're using, they never stop running. And same thing with the tollway, I think tollway's geared a little bit differently, but it's along the same methodology.
Brian, Dan, just to clarify, I'm a little confused, uh maybe I misunderstood. Alderman Gusterson asked about the, the larger trucks and the delay. You had said those, like for the snowstorm, go inside. And then, then Eric mentioned a s- a safety issue, but you had just said those bigger trucks are in. I, I just don't understand what, what vehicles are outside that would create a safety issue if they're the smaller vehicles, I'm, I maybe.
Some of the equipment, uh, you know, and, and it will be some of the equipment, for example, an end loader. Uh, say we couldn't get the end loader in there, well, the end loader, uh typically we load our trucks prior to, but depending on the storm event, uh the end loader might be out there. There may be a situation where the larger truck will be out there, because the mechanic has a truck or vehicle tied up that's, you know, we can't use his bay, for example.
What about the smaller trucks? Cause that's what's in my subdivision, is the smaller trucks, I rarely see the larger truck.
The smaller trucks, all three, is it three or five?
Smaller truck is what I'm seeing on my roads.
The three to five smaller trucks are all outside.
Yeah, and that's what comes down my street, is the smaller truck, that's why I get concerned.
Trucks, Dan, what tons are those?
Those are uh one and a half, one and a half uh to two ton, two and a half tons, I believe, the larger ones are five tons.
And the smaller ones do the interior streets?
Yes.
And do mine.
And clean up the cul-de-sacs, uh, you know, so they're obviously a major portion, a major part of the whole game plan. Does anybody want to see the pictures?
Tom, one quick question, I know we talked about municipal services a few years ago, and it was two, four and eight million, we had three different options. With, with costs of everything going up, have those costs have gone up as well, I would assume, and it's?
Well, from the last time that we had a cost of approximately, uh, I believe it was seven million that we had presented. Uh, and that was approximately two years ago, I think it was at this point. Um, recently, with the refurbishment of the sanitary service, we had a septic field out in front of the building along adjacent to Frontage Road. By getting rid of that septic field, I turned around and said, hey, let's take a look at the parking. So that was one of our shortfalls, was the parking. So reached out back to the architect and said, what if we were to create a zero setback line from Frontage Road, cause that portion of Frontage Road is ours, I just want to preface that, that not all Frontage Roads are ours. But in this particular case, the Frontage Road fronting the Public Works and Sterling Bay is the city of Darien's responsibility. So, I said, let's look at diagonal parking adjacent to Frontage Road, which would mean zoning for zero setback to create that parking, diagonal parking along the. which would mean zoning for zero setback to create that parking, diagonal parking along the entire frontage there for the Public Works Department. So, that, you know, that could also solve a problem for, I'll call it for the forest preserve, you know, during the weekends when we're not utilizing it, for example, or whatever the case is. Uh, but that opportunity now opens a brand new game up. So, we're able to fit parking. What is the dollar cost? The dollar cost right now, uh, I know that, uh, the architect had presented nine million dollars. Um, I briefly looked at it and basically cut half a million off of there already. Okay, um, so I'm sure there's more shaving of the preliminary budget or budget that he had proposed, uh, but again, it was not looked at in entire depth.
Yeah, and I, I suggest that you do what, um, Woodridge did and they put a video together, a tour of the police facility. And if you watch that, you'll think you're probably in the municipal services building with all the leaks going on. So, they did a really good job of that video, which I think they break ground comes April or May of this year for the police facility. Then the municipal services comes later. But it's a, it's a great video that really showed the need that, that's there.
You know, and, and I will even take the opportunity to let all residents know, if anyone wants to come down to our facility, which is on Frontage Road, just, uh, east of Cass, any given moments, um, you know, we would love to have you there. Um, so questions and or concerns, we'd be more than happy to address with any resident or again, if they want to do a walkthrough, uh, we would love to have them there.
I think you should get the press to do a walkthrough.
Mary?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I guess my question for Alderman Gustafson is, without any guarantee of, um, cannabis revenue in the foreseeable future, how would you, um, plan to finance such?
Woodridge is doing it. Woodridge is doing a police facility and municipal services.
I'm not talking about Woodridge, I'm talking about the city of Darien.
We have to, that's what the budget process is for, to sit there and determine that. We can't just continue to ignore it. We've got to really start, take, at least take a hard look at it to see, you know, what can be done. I mean, we got to do something. So, I mean, we're going to have to try to figure something out, a way to do it now. I would love to see the marijuana revenue come because then the issue of funding the, the building, municipal services building is complete with that kind of revenue coming in. But unfortunately, because of the state of Illinois, now delaying, there's more communities around us now. I can just see it on four corners that Woodridge will get one and Downers Grove will get one on four corners and we'll never get one in Darien if that happens there because the saturation point is filled. So, that, that's what we're running up against here and it scares the living heck out of me right now, what could happen because the state of Illinois delayed things so much. We had a great opportunity when we first approved it. Now, we've got huge competition. And, but we still, that still doesn't mean we've got to do something at municipal services, try to figure something out. We can't, you know, if we don't, I mean, uh, you got to be doing a mold service, you know, evaluation of that building. Environmentally, I don't know how healthy it is to even be in that building, to be honest with you, from walking through it. And I've been in, worked in a building that we had that problem. And we had to have the, a good portion of the building ripped up to fix it because people were, were starting to get health issues. I don't think you've got that part yet, but people aren't potentially in there long enough. But two years from now, you know, we could have, people could have issues. But I think we're going to have to, if we, if we can't fix it, we got to figure out how bad the problem is.
But Eric, what I'm hearing though is issues, I mean, this is not a new building. We wouldn't tear down Public Works. So, issues you're mentioning of concern would still be there under the nine million dollar or eight million dollar.
No, they tear down, it's a tear down.
The whole building?
Yeah.
Majority, yeah, majority of the building would be a tear down, at least where all the bays are and from the.
Or for half, uh, for how much?
Eight, eight, uh, eight point five million. The offices would remain with the brick facade that's currently in place. But it would still get dropped, it would still get dropped, uh, stripped down to bare bones and obviously, you know, energy efficiency, so on and so forth.
And Alderman Sullivan?
We did, we just got to look at the details and that's what I asked Dan, you know, you know, Dan now says he's got some details that we can talk about at the budget meeting.
Eric, the, um, several years ago when Mr. Zurgat was hired, he did an evaluation of the building. And the first report he gave us along with the architectural plans, and he gave us three plans, Dan. One was the cheap, the cheaper, the cheapest one was in the millions. And it was, the other one was like four to five and it was like eight to nine million for the other one. But he did an analysis of things like mold, ADA requirements, ventilation, he did all that. So, you have all that information already. If Eric wants to see it.
That's a long time ago. I, I wouldn't go by that.
Been since I've been here, so it's less than three years.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have that. I mean, he, he gave us that report.
We have some remediation that was completed by him. And again, I'd have to look at all the details and, and see exactly what was all surveyed and the scopes of it.
I mean, I, I mean, I sat, I sat, I sat where you're sitting and I had, I saw, remember Tom Zurgat standing at that microphone, giving a report point by point of what was wrong with that building and what needed, what could be fixed for this amount, what could be fixed for this amount. So, that data, that data is there, Eric.
I guess my, as the chairperson of the Admin Finance Committee, who's going to be leading the budget discussions in our workshop that starts in two weeks, I just want to make sure that we're being efficient and effective in our discussions. And if we're going to spend a, a great deal of time talking about a building that there's no revenue to fund, I mean, conceptually, you know, there's a lot of things, like I want a pony and I, I'd love to have a race car, but if it's something we can't afford to do, I just, I just want to make sure.
We don't even know if we can afford to do it or not. And that's why I got to get Mike involved in it and stuff to take a look at.
I just want to make sure that we're spending our time efficiently when we're having our budget workshops.
Well, to me, that's the most important thing in the budget workshop. So, I mean, if we have to have another, we have to have another meeting to, to solely for that purpose, we should set up another meeting.
Well, isn't that something that should be in goal setting versus like a budget where, I mean, isn't, isn't, isn't there something that, another time to be having that discussion versus when we're planning a budget?
Like a budget item to me.
But how can we budget for something like that when we don't have the revenue? So, where's the money going to come from?
Understand the size of the budget and then figure out and have a conversation with Mike of what type of funding could we get? What's it going to cost? I have no idea what it's going to cost me on an annual basis for that building. Okay?
A couple, when we did this a couple of years back, we did talk about the numbers, but simply put, it'd have to be a bond issue. It would have to be a general obligation bond. It's not, it's not.
And we need, we need to discuss that then. I want, you know, I want to go through the details of it. I want to understand, I want to understand what he's got in his budget for it.
In terms of the.
I'm tired of avoiding the, the grill in the room.
Well, when our annual revenue for the city of Darien is like estimated to be about fifteen million dollars, you can't go out and spend eight million dollars on a new building without getting alternative revenue.
That's correct. But we do that all the time.
So, you're proposing a bet?
I am not proposing anything until I see the numbers. And I haven't seen the numbers yet.
Well, Eric, we did have the numbers.
That's what a budget meeting's for. But that's what a budget meeting is for. What the heck are we wasting time sitting in a budget meeting if I don't talk about the municipal services building? That's ridiculous. I won't even attend the budget meetings if that's what it's coming down to. I'm serious, that's ridiculous.
All I mentioned is, when we talked about it.
I want that on the agenda.
We did have numbers though. We did talk about numbers and bond issues. I had that whole chart during the budget that, and I mean, you know, not everybody recalls all the meetings, I understand. The only thing I, I've asked the city council and I, and Dan and myself, and we debate this for twenty years, is you know, some, Eric talks about this as a need. I talk about it as a want. I think the city council ultimately has to decide, is it a need or a want? Because I don't understand how it's a need when Public Works, the best Public Works group around is able to operate more efficiently than I know out of our circumstances now.
It just seems like other communities like Countryside got a brand new building, okay? Woodridge is getting a new building. I can go down the list of all the new buildings that have been put up. So, somehow they're funding this.
Yeah, bonds.
Okay, are we, you know, we got to figure out what the need is. I don't know how big this needs, I don't know what the cost is going to be. But I'm darn well, I think we need to explore it and understand it so we can make an educated decision. Right now, I cannot make an educated decision if we need a new municipal services building or not.
Eric, two years ago, when we hired Zurgat to come in, we had a proposal to build a new municipal services on property off of Lamont Road, correct Dan?
Well, that was part of the deal. The concept was the same.
Right, the concept was to sell the current property we had for X amount of dollars, utilize those dollars to buy the property on Lamont Road. All those costs were given to you. This council had all that information. We never kept anything from anybody. We all knew the cost and this council decided not to do it.
And, and that, you, that's right, the council decided. Well, we need to get to where the council can decide with the facts. We don't have the facts to make a decision.
You have the facts two years ago and the council decided, no.
We don't have the facts right now. I wasn't on the council then.
Yes, you were.
Two years.
I approved it.
Two years, two years ago, you were on the council?
Not when we, not when this came up to the, not with the numbers and stuff, the details of it.
Tom, I, I was mayor when Zurgat made his presentation and I was mayor when we talked about buying that property.
Two years.
You and I were elected at the same time, so you were on the council.
It's two years later. I mean, do other, other Aldermen have any, any thoughts at all on this? Am I way off base of wanting to at least understand what we got here?
I mean, I would support, the reason I asked the question, what was before eight million going to nine million is the reality of it is, you know, in the private industry, everything's going up more and more expensive. And at the end of the day, it is the grill in the room and it has to be addressed whether it's now or five years from now and it's twenty percent more. I mean, you have to look at a bond. We raised, uh, you know, food and beverage tax for general budget, you know, it's been done before. Uh, we've been really financially conservative. We haven't raised any taxes over ten years. Residents know that things have gone up in price. And, and you know, also you have a good facility, have good employees going there too, right? I work in a, a facility that I'm not a big fan of and you know, look at potential other options. So, we want the best employees. We got to have good facilities from that work at as well, so. And maybe we can look at making a part of it a community center, you know, other half of the building, we could, you know, maybe like an art center. I know Mary, we potentially looked at doing a, an art center. You know, there's so many possibilities, but what worries me is just kicking this can down the road all the time. And I stopped by Municipal Services to drop off some pizzas a couple, a couple of months ago and yeah, it's, it's a dump in there. So, it, it has to get addressed eventually. Kicking the can further down the road, it just doesn't hurt, doesn't help it unfortunately. So, I'll support looking at it or other options.
Well, I think we're going to have an interesting discussion at our budget meetings. You're welcome as an elected official to bring it up during the budget process, but we have a lot to cover with our budget process, Eric. So, I hope you're part of those meetings and I hope you participate in those meetings on everything that we have to go over, which is critical for our budget. If you bring this up, there will be a discussion that evening, just as there is now.
Okay.
Eric, what would be helpful if you, you said you'll have a number of questions. If you get those to us ahead of time, we could, you know, research and make sure we're, we have the responses ready.
It's more of the, the, the details and stuff regarding the, the cost and those kind of things, because.
But haven't you met with Dan and gotten that from him? Okay, well then I.
That's the purpose of a budget meeting, is to go through that.
Well, if something like Brian just mentioned can be provided ahead of time so that we don't spend hours just hypothetically talking about something.
I can spend hours. Everybody, everybody here needs to hear the story that Dan has and make an educated decision. We don't just rely on just myself to, I get comfortable, oh, we don't need it right now. That's not the way a council works.
I think everybody in this room has been in that building.
We've got seven people that have to vote and all seven need to be educated. All seven.
Well, I'd like to ask my fellow council members over the next two weeks to educate themselves.
That's what the meeting's for.
You can't go over and.
I, I don't get educated in every other thing that's in that budget meeting before the budget meeting occurs.
We prepare before we go in the meetings.
I've managed budget meetings for fifteen years in my career, okay? I know how to run a budget meeting.
Well, Eric, I'm the one that's running the meeting and I'm asking all the alderpeople in this room to take the time, if you haven't been over there recently, get over there.
Oh, absolutely.
If, but I think everyone has taken a tour and within the last year, that if you have questions about this, about the costs, that to please get information from Dan and meet with it so that we can go into our meeting and be educated and have a constructive conversation about this. And there's many, many, it's obviously this is your number one and only priority in the budget.
It's not my only, don't put words in my mouth. It's not my only, only item.
Countless items in the budget that need to be discussed and voted on to keep our city running efficiently.
This is one of the countless.
Eric, just a follow up and, and I'm done. I just want to make sure I know what you're asking. So, if you have, if you have issues, you said that nuts and bolts of the building. I'm sorry, my question more was, I, if you want, I can prepare information on what a, uh, general obligation bond would be, what it would mean to property taxes, if you're asking that, but I.
Yeah, I, I need to see the whole picture.
Okay.
I mean, that's the, the thing. I need to fully understand what the need is, what the costs are going to be and how we're going to fund it in the whole nine yards. I mean, you got to see the whole picture here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Eric, uh, we'll, Brian will get you that, that data. He'll put that data together. He'll work with Mike. We'll get that data. Do we have any other questions for Dan or the chief?
I'm going to tie a communication in with the snow removal and I apologize. I did get a communication from Bob Rosetto on, um, last Wednesday during the snow. Um, trucks had come through. Dan, you and I have kind of already discussed it. Um, sometimes our, our cul-de-sacs are, are victims of snow coming, coming through where the residents are already, you know, shoveled their driveways out and our, our trucks come through and they're, they kind of pile up. So, I got that, I got that kind of conversation. Went over there to see, by the time I came back, he, him and the neighbors had all that stuff where he kind of cleaned up, but you know, I don't know, that's, you know, we talk about, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to, when you get that kind of snow coming through, but.
I think, I think Chris Throm offered a really nice response today to a resident who had similar concerns, correct Dan?
Uh, today was that the one regards to piles of snow? I crafted that one.
Yeah, I mean, Chris described the entire process, what they do the first round, what they do the second round. In terms of the right of way, how, how wide the right of way is, can the right of way take all the snow that's going to go up on the right of way? This was with regard to sidewalks, Joe, this one. Because it came around and it put snow on, on the sidewalks. But then he also came out and said, you know, they're more than glad to come out and clear some of that when, when they get the time to do that. And what he was trying to explain is, you know, they were working, they had made how many passes, Dan? How many? They make the first pass, they make the second pass. They don't really go to, to the curb till like the third time around or so?
And that's correct, Mr. Mayor. In a way, I explained it through that email. It was, you know, our operations, what our priority are, what our priority is, what we'll do. And yeah, you know, there, in these unique storms, when you start getting that four to six inches and you have plows that are, you know, for twelve hours just running around, piles are going to accumulate. And while they accumulate on the corners, you know, we'll try our best not to put it all there, but there's nowhere else that we can put it, especially when the mouths of these radiuses on these corners are so big, it has to be put somewhere. So, long story short is that if a resident sees a corner that they're sensitive to, whether they, residents walk it, whether they have their furry critter, critters, you know, we'll make every opportunity to get out there and clear that corner for them. We get it. School bus, uh, crossings, excuse me, school bus drop offs and pickups, those are a priority for us too. Um, so, you know, during a snowstorm event, we have probably thirty-five to forty hours of additional work after a storm is subsided.
You know, I had a, I had a resident sent me an email that day. She wanted to let me know that when the plow came around her cul-de-sac, they deposited about a foot or so of snow in front of her, her driveway. And I wanted to tell her, come over to my house, because I got about a foot or two in front of mine when the plow came around my house. It's something that happens. If you want, they, they can't come any further than that because they'll knock down your mailbox if they come any further than that.
We could, but yeah, probably wouldn't be the most logical.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, one last thing. I talked to Alderman Schauer about this, um, about Saturday night. Hey, chief. There was a, um, head-on traffic accident off of, uh, between Seventy-Ninth and Concord on Cass Avenue Saturday night. I saw it and, um, I, I was coming home from church when I saw it, but I saw an email from, um, on the, on next door that some residents across the street from this, it, you know, ran out and helped, uh, the, the victims of this, of this car wreck. Did you, you know, any, anything of who those witnesses might have been? Because it sounds like they went above and beyond the call of duty, um, before your, your responders had gotten to the scene.
Um, I do not. Um, I will check the report and I'll ask the, uh, respondent, the officers that responded.
It would be nice if we, somehow we could find out who those people were because they need to be. It would be nice if we, somehow we could find out who those people were, because they need to be, they need to be acknowledged for what they did on Saturday night.
Anything else, Joe?
I'm good.
Lester Tug. Okay. It takes us to our standing committee reports. Do any of the aldermen have committee reports to share?
Treasurer's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Michael. Uh, and I just thought to myself, I got my treasurer's report. Mike? I wasn't avoiding you, Mike.
But I was nodding off myself.
Hey, hey, hey. You were drinking, you were thinking of bonds and class and.
Is that why I'm spending eight million dollars and you're falling asleep? I don't think so. No, wants and needs, that's key words there. Uh, saving, I'm requesting council's approval. Warrant number twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen, and the amount of two hundred one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars, fourteen cents from listed funds and payroll for the period ended January twenty-seventh. The amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents, for a total be approved of four hundred eighty thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments for the treasurer? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Warrant's been passed. Mike, the monthly report?
Okay, the monthly report for the eight months ended December thirtieth, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of six million, uh, I'm sorry, uh, twelve million six hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars, expenses of nine million four hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars, current balance of five million seven hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue of five million five hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars, expenses of four million six hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars, current balance of four million four hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of eight hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars, expenses of one million four hundred five thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars, for a current balance of eight hundred thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, expenses of one hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred sixteen dollars, current balance of two million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand thirty-nine dollars. And capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of one million nine hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars, expenses of one million five hundred eighty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars, current balance of ten million four hundred nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Any questions for Mike? Mike, you, you have some additional information?
Yeah, then quickly, I just wanted to update the council, uh, just very quickly, as I did in the work session, in terms of the quarterly uh, meeting we had for the police pension fund, uh, for the fourth quarter, which reflects October through December, which obviously was a good month for the stock market. Anybody that's invested in the stock market realizes January was not so good, February coming back somewhat, so uh, we have to take it with a grain of salt, but the fourth quarter was very good. Uh, we had a fourth quarter return of four point three percent, which reflected seven percent on equities, a negative seven tenths of a percent return on fixed income, so the total for the quarter, four point three percent. They report on a calendar year basis, so for the calendar year, January through December, the fund reflected a, uh, a, uh, return of eleven point two percent. Uh, two point two percent of that was reflected in the first quarter. If you were to try and equate it to our fiscal year, which ends April thirtieth, would bring it down to nine percent. I know April last year was pretty good. So if we discounted that, it might bring it down to about the seven percent, which is what we hope for our fund to return, at least that, so we don't have an increase, too much of an increase in our police pension contribution. Uh, the interesting thing that I thought, uh, was they also reflect the one-year, three-year, five-year, and ten-year returns for the fund. Uh, for the ten-year return was eight point five percent, five-year, ten point three, three-year naturally was an outstanding period of fourteen point five, and for the one-year return, as I indicated, eleven point two percent. Uh, so it was a very good quarter. Uh, we're gonna be, end, end up giving a fair amount of that back in January, but hopefully, we're still on track to meet our seven percent return for the audience that needs to know. Our, the assumptions are that our fund will earn at least seven percent in order not to have to increase our contribution farther. Uh, but if there's any shortfall from that, then naturally it impacts the amount of our contribution, which affects the amount of their real estate taxes.
Any questions from Mike? Thanks, Michael. All right, now standing committee reports. Alderman Belzak.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the municipal services next meeting will be on Monday, uh, the tw- the twenty-eighth of the month in council chambers at seven P M.
Mary?
Um, the administrative finance meeting met tonight, and we'll be meeting again on Monday, March seventh at six P M. in the upstairs conference room. The, um, meeting of a whole of the administrative finance committee, which is also known as the budget workshops for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, will start on, uh, Wednesday, February twenty-third, and continue, um, all the subsequent weeks as needed um, at six-thirty in the council chambers. And, um, uh, the council should anticipate getting, um, the budget documents um, by the seventeenth of February. And lastly, the economic development committee had a, a really great meeting last week, and they will be meeting again on Thursday, March third, at seven P M. in council chambers.
Thank you, Mary. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the police committee is scheduled to meet on February twenty-second, twenty-two. Um, at six o'clock across Parkland in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Takes us to questions, comments, agenda-related. And I think we just had Mr. Jackson and someone else in the audience. Does anyone have any questions regarding our agenda? If not, takes us to old business. There being none, we move to our consent agenda. Uh, we have a long, lengthy consent agenda. The first two items, uh, consideration of motion to approve the Darien Chamber of Commerce annual Darien Dash, a ten-k run, a five-k run, a one-mile walk on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, beginning at eight A M. And authorize the chief of police to finalize the details of this event with the Chamber of Commerce. And then item B is consideration of a motion to approve the use of the right half of the following streets for the Darien Dash. And the first list, which is lengthy, uh, covers the five-k and the ten-k course, and the second paragraph covers the, the one-mile course. Item C is consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving variations from the Darien zoning ordinance for fourteen fourteen Sequoia Lane. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with LRS Clean Sweep for the city of Darien's twenty-twenty-two street sweeping program not to exceed forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code supplemental. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amended contract extension with Rags Electric Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-two streetlight maintenance beginning May first, twenty-twenty-two, through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, item G, consideration of motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal for analytical soil testing fees from Clean Soils Consulting LLC at the proposed unit prices for certain ways for a period of May first, twenty-twenty-two, through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the twenty-twenty-two street maintenance project between the city of Darien and Orange Crush LLC. The following schedule of pricing, base bid, one million five hundred nine thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Alternate one, patching seventy-eight thousand for a total of one million five hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from Advanced Automation and Controls Incorporated in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the urgent upgrade of cellular communication for the portable potable water SCADA system. Uh, and item J, consideration of a motion to approve a contingency in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for SCADA-related hardware may be required to enhance the SCADA. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Clistak. End the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda's been approved. Takes us to no, new business. There being none. Takes us to questions, comments, announcements. Do any of the aldermen have anything they'd like to announce? I know Mary announced the, uh, citizen of the year banquet and the citizen of the year coffee. Uh, I'd like to mention that two days after that, on Sunday, March sixth, the Darien Lions Club will be holding their annual pancake breakfast at Eisenhower Junior High. Uh, tickets are available. Any one of us who belong to the Lions Club will have tickets and we'd be more than happy to supply those tickets.
So you're throwing, you're throwing my birthday party at the pancake, isn't it? That's beautiful. Good to know.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything, anything else? Anybody else has? Uh, Eric?
Um, if people can't find something to do this weekend in Darien, join me at the Milwaukee Musky Fishing Show, starting Friday through Sunday in Milwaukee. No vaccinations or masks are required.
Thank you. Mary, did you have something?
No, I'm sorry.
Tom?
Quick question. Uh, historically, at one time, you know, our police did a wonderful job. At one time, we had to invest in a, uh, new, uh, police building. And this city hall, at one time, city staff has a wonderful job, and we had to invest into a new city hall. What was the criteria that eventually, on both those that you moved forward, that's different than like a municipal services building?
I was not an elected official.
Just in general, just like the history.
Well, I'll give you a little brief history. I was not elected official at the time, but I was still involved in city government. And, um, basically, this building was the police department as well as city hall. And we had a, the portion that was the police department, the file cabinets were kept in, in a bathtub. Uh, criminal, criminals, violators who were brought in were manacled to a wall with a chain, uh, sitting on a bench. Uh, what they did is they actually had open houses. They had people come in to the building, take a look at the building. And, uh, the city council made the decision to have a new police department. And what they did is they formed a committee. My, my brother-in-law, Morgan Cotton, was on that committee. They traveled around, they looked at other police facilities. They eventually came back with recommendation to the city council, and the city council, uh, moved to, uh, build a new police facility, which at that time, I think that building was about three point five million dollars back in ninety-three or ninety-four, ninety-five. That's when that occurred, but that's, that was the process. This bu, and then in ninety-seven, when I was elected alderman, uh, we also decided to make this building what it is today. Uh, where we're sit, where we're seated right now, uh, was where people would, would seat. And city council was sitting on that wall over there on a dais that was raised above. Well, actually, the city administrator, the city clerk, and the mayor were up, and attorney were up there, and the aldermen were at tables. And there was a railing that almost looked like a courtroom railing that separated the aldermen from this audience. But this building then went under renovation in nineteen ninety-seven, because when I was first elected alderman, we actually met for about six months or so in the police training room, until this building was complete. So there was really two phases. Once the police department was done, so it took us a couple of years, and then we did this. And I don't remember the exact cost for this. Uh, that was even before Brian's time, that was done by the time Brian came in. So, but I don't think it was as expensive to do this as it was to do.
Okay, I was just curious on how.
That was the process. And they did, they did a tour. They brought people in, they had people look at it. And so when they came out and said, we want to build a new police department at X amount of dollars, people had seen it. And they had evidence that, and to be quite honest, there was a need. It wasn't a want, that was a need. Because it was terrible what they had to deal with in terms of a police facility.
No, thanks.
That answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I wasn't around, so I was, I was just, just, just curious. So, so, you know, everyone uses a snowplow, but I don't use the police too often, try to stay out of trouble.
Anything else? Uh, if not, motion to adjourn. Mary, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.